Well.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed doing all that.
Well, thanks for having me.
Okay.
If you can, it's the same place as last time.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, of course, do it there. I don't know that we have anything that has started.
Yeah. And it's just being, uh, there's a guy, someone from, uh, the couple of researchers who took, which is very cool, like, and L L R, and they, like, generated a big pile about the product and turned it into a training set and trained it again.
Yeah, there's like a copy of it.
And after, like, nine generations, you ask it about architecture and after half the sentence, it starts talking about jackramps.
That's why I told you.
Jackramps, red tail, blue tail, yellow tail, jackramps.
So they said, continue to do this.
I love how people are already trying to break them. Because that's where you find, like, really people always.
We're live streaming, so that part.
Essentially, they caution them. Basically, training sets, skin from the web after. The one in three, how your posts in chat G P T are going to be sent with their original content, but you won't know. Um, and there's actually already been one time. An internet archive was almost de-asked by someone posted on.
I'm pretty sure Mary, you were coming out.
I was trying to get here early, but the traffic, uh, the traffic could not cooperate.
So still.
Uh, I've got a bit of a gorgie in the afternoon. So we can circle back around in the afternoon.
You're lucky.
Yeah, that's, because that's a lot to first through then.
I just know it's gonna be bad.
I, I had an omission from the report that I have added back in as a.
Okay, there you go.
Uh, I didn't have the tour to Castro.
One octo, one octo.
Yeah.
Well. Well, it's not. This one's got a little more.
Ah, nice, nice.
I know, she likes to drink.
Good stuff.
I like ice cream. Just to let you know. Like now, yeah.
She's like, well, then never mind. Relate it, relate it. Yeah. Yeah, and which passport is it? That right, which one?
I did that one.
It's one my computer doesn't know how to.
Who did? No, 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 this is different one.
Oh, is that the one where it's supposed to be on?
Mine's always been on.
Right, here's ten copies.
There's not, the one I used to be on.
I don't see it.
It was only a janitor.
See what? Nope. The council.
I keep thinking I forgot.
I changed the names.
I even called Brianna and asked her. I think I covered everything.
I never, like, I never dreamed anything of mine, and it's on council now, but it still has the same old name down there.
Doesn't show you S C dot local.
Yeah, I can check it.
Why, I'll just do it now.
This is definitely.
Okay.
I think this is a high sign if we don't spend this much. We have Bethany City.
And this would be two more. This is here, Jim.
I'll take that. And we'll shift tables and chairs between these two things. The stage I got with the, I think, was pretty good. We'll put this podium on it, and we'll have its little steps to get up to it, but everyone can get up there and just talk, and be like, hey, we're just gonna have to try to get you guys to sit down. But again, I thought it was important, and that's what makes me so nervous in the clean iron, the funky, the change of everything. I keep thinking I'm forgetting some, but I don't know what it is. Now, the dinner, the outstation, everything's important. Like, I talked to Gina for today, and she said that, uh.
I hear stuff.
And, uh, Sammy's really recommended they go with the twelve ounce. They could, but it'd be about fifty dollars a person, which I'll be kicking.
Looks like it's connected.
So.
What size are they getting?
They were, they were kicked out. Yeah, and that's why she's like, that was. But then, with them, they want to also pay for the alcohol, so I don't have any alcohol for the dinner. And, um, but the alcohol, they think is, uh, you know, against, and they're gonna, you know, another, figure it's ten dollars a person.
Right, yeah.
So that's sixty dollars a plate, but they would, so that's two for hoes, that's a hundred and fifty dollars. But to me, that's not a big deal. I think, pay here for three nights, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night. Hospitality, food, everything else, so I don't like to be there. But she was gonna talk to.
I was looking forward to seeing the comet that is rarely seen. That's part I was looking for. The ones in dark, there's a red streak on the bottom, and it was, it was a comet that has really odd orbit, and it comes to near us every seventy-four years. Well, yeah, I lost when I was here.
Oh, we're talking about, uh, Susan.
Yeah. Did I miss it? Didn't you put it already?
Yeah, this was all part of the eclipse.
Oh.
During the darkness, there was a red streak in the bottom, and that was that comet.
Um, yeah, where I was at, it was just dark.
Yeah, it was very overpassing.
Oh, yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of really Sammy's. Sure, like, I'm just saying.
We have, well, all of them.
Well, like, like, other than. You can literally see, like, the sky, and you're up as high as you can.
The passwords of that.
And it really, it does, it's a trap. It's, it.
Oh, okay.
I learned that in the beginning, but no, um.
Relax.
It was just.
Hey.
Good, we have this one.
Yeah, I do, I do. This is Natalie.
Natalie, very nice to meet you.
This is God Dixon, our resident city administrator.
Now, you, are you a nurse?
I don't mind, because, because all I could find was counsel.
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, I mean, that's not the one I get in science, which is, that's what it is.
You're the, you're the pay for. Yeah, we have the.
So those guests work, there's.
Yeah, but that one doesn't come up as.
It doesn't come up.
It's one of my two.
Mexico. Because I don't know why it said counsel.
Yeah, that's, 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 that might.
She's connected to them. I don't know, because I, I don't know.
Maybe there's some more. These other ones are. I'll speak to you with eventually.
Well, I have the same problem all the way. We'll see if I can get it.
All right, don't worry, we're good. I've, I've got my agendas downloaded, and the packet downloaded, so I'm good to go. I feel it's just, the, the mystery of the Wi-Fi.
Can I speak?
Yeah, I think that's good.
I can add this.
Counsel trainer, I'm connected. I just got a bunch of emails.
Do you know? You don't know what it is, do you?
Hey.
It's not supposed to say counsel.
If you guys can't finish this meeting in one hour, I'm gonna be disappointed. Seriously.
How, are you connected to counsel?
Uh.
That's what his is connected to.
Mine is, it's counsel.
What's the password?
I don't know. So it's the, like, it's the same network that I've always been connected to, C O C dot local. I actually open up the tool, and it has a fancy name, it's just counsel.
Why is it asking for a password? The password would be set for our password protect.
You're making me scared to, like, run up those things.
It's not working.
Scott, my.
What? I know that, but this, this is the first I had. There's a, there's a C O C guest, which is the guest one. This one, the name, the same as ours.
This is counsel, and it's the same gas for origin.
Yes, give me for the San Jasper, it's always. I don't have that. That one, one, seven, six.
But, because it came up right here, I didn't have to put it in. It automatically came up.
Were you looking for it?
It's asking for a password.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna try the one.
Hey.
I can't read this.
That's the one.
These are the old ones. Yeah, that's what I have, because it's been out.
This is one, one, or, or, L, L, three, this is, you know, what's that?
V.
And that's a one.
That's one.
L, L, three.
That's one. Well, uh, you wanna see limits one?
Yes.
But we're, we're putting it, a new one back. We're gonna get, like, a lot of speakers to put it on.
Yeah, they have it on the other side of that. It should be this side.
Oh, it's a whole separate.
Ten seconds.
Okay, I've started the sound up. I'm gonna look and see.
Go for it.
I apologize, everybody. We're just making sure that the livestream is up, so.
And it's running. He just had called it, so the sound wasn't able to allow that.
All right.
When you're done, get that back.
Unless they wanted to check.
Fill that password. That's not the right one.
Okay, well, that's, that was just in my drawer.
That, no.
So you can throw it away, I don't need it no more.
That's, uh. Okay, that worked. Yeah. Just hold it on.
No sound yet?
They know I talked.
Okay. Well, we could have talked, but, all right. Can we tell a joke?
I've got my audio.
All right, so we're good? All right, uh, we're gonna call this meeting to, to order at five thirty-three. Let's begin with the roll call.
Shane Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Phil King, District Three.
David Mers for District Four. Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. We're all here. Maybe not all here, but we're all here. All right, uh, next, uh, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, uh, and then remain standing for the invocation.
To the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. On the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
As you remain standing, we have Pastor Gutierrez from, uh, Discover Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, and we thank you for this meeting. I pray that this meeting would, uh, be one that has, uh, uh, fruit that comes out of it, that blesses our community, that encourages our community, and I pray a special blessing over this council. May you bless their families, Lord, bless everything that they do, uh, because they serve this city, and we're thankful for them. Lord, we ask you to be with us in this, uh, time that we have, and all the discussions that are going to happen, in Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you guys, thank you. Hey, and thank you for all of the folks that came out to help us out with the clips. That was amazing.
It was a lot of fun.
All right, next, we have citizens' comments. Uh, anybody that would like to speak for citizens' comments, please come up, give your name and your address. Oh, yes, you're welcome. Uh, and I just ask that you, uh, keep your comments to three minutes or less, uh, and just, uh. Citizens' comments. Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to hear you.
Sorry, we've been having issues with these mics. We're still working on it. Uh, so I was just saying, please, address the council with your name and your address for the record. Uh, please keep comments to three minutes, and just to make sure that everybody is aware, we cannot comment on anything that is said during citizens' comments, but we'd be happy to follow up afterward. Please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Karen Feifield. Do you want my address?
Yes, please.
Eight oh five Washington Street, here in Castroville. I've lived here my entire life, which will soon be sixty-seven years in total. Now, being sixty-seven puts me in that elderly category. Up until last week, I was not aware we had a citizen senior discount for electricity. Uh, of course, immediately signed up for it, went home, did a little mini poll. Out of six neighbors, only two were aware that that existed, and those two said it was at the bottom of a newsletter some time ago. So I would like you to take into account the citizens that built this town and all the people that come before you. We're old now. We need all the help we can get. So please, when the next time you think of this, put it more prominently where people can, that need it, can take advantage of it. The second thing I thought of on the way here, which is, why are those people in the Lost Saloon, or whatever the hell the name is now, allowed to park over here when there is a city council meeting on? I had to come around back because every single slot was full. There should be some kind of gentleman's agreement that when they have an event and there's a council meeting, that it be limited. And now, what I'm really here for is, having found out about the senior discount on the rate, I would like to suggest to council and greatly encourage that when you're on a fixed income, as I am, social security, it does not go far. And the government only releases the social security checks on the second, third, and fourth Wednesdays of the month, okay? And which Wednesday you get is determined by what the date is. Like, for instance, my date is the twenty-ninth, that's my birth date. Therefore, I am in the fourth category. That means that my social security check gets deposited sometime between the twenty-sixth and the twenty-eighth of the month, which makes me late every single time on my utility bill. Now, thirty, thirty-five dollars may not sound like much, but when you're on a fixed income, it is, it determines whether or not you pick up a prescription, or you actually have meat that last month of the, before your check gets there. So I'm asking you to make available a waiver on the late fees for the elderly community. Now, you can do it the same way that you did it before, you know, with the senior rates. Sign up, that's great. Sign up, show your driver's license, proves you're sixty-five or older. Bingo, no more late fees. I'm not saying don't cut off their electricity if they fail to pay, because there will be some that will try to take advantage of this. However, the vast majority of us need a little extra time to wait for our checks to get here without being penalized thirty, thirty-five bucks. Okay, it just seems fair. Now, I think I've exhausted my repertoire. Did I forget anything, anybody? Okay, that's all I had to say, and I do know how difficult your jobs are. I served myself, so I've been there. I've had people come to my door, knock on my door, and tell me about their neighbor's dog that is in their yard. So been there, done that, got their t-shirt, whole nine yards. But I would really like to work with the council on this, to make this actually happen and not get sideburnered, because I am not a sideburner woman. I will continue to beat the drum until somebody listens. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, who else would like to speak for it? Oh, sorry, Bob Beechout.
Okay, my name is Milton Tyce Junior. I live at eleven fifteen Madrid Street. Lived here all my life, and had a business here for thirty-four years. Myself and other people in Castroville are becoming very concerned about all the golf carts and A T Vs that are being run around in town with kids in them, underage, crossing Highway ninety. The way I understand, they go from here to the golf course, which is supposed to be something with two miles, but I've tracked that radius over two miles. But we're just wondering why the city allows golf carts to run in town, crossing ninety and even going to Walmart. I'm not blaming anybody, we're just trying to, I guess you could say, thinking of Castroville, because if somebody gets hit, who's gonna get sued? I call it Hondo. Hondo does not allow it, period. But that's up, up to y'all, but something really needs to be done. It's very, it's getting out of hand. Um, myself, I have a place in Rangers Pass. There, you can get a license plate and put it on your golf cart, and then every year you get a sticker that goes on there, and you can, the city can make money off of this, too. You sell them a license plate, and at each year you get a sticker to put on the license plate, which makes everything legal. You have to have insurance, should prove all, you have to have it street legal, turn signals, and all, all the good stuff. I really don't have a whole lot to other to say, but it, it needs to be looked into. Please. That's all I got to say.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is, uh, Robert Lee. I live at thirteen fourteen Gentile's. I haven't lived here all my life, and for those of you that have, I hope this isn't the last day of it, uh, but been here long enough. Anyway, I have three items I'd like to, actually twenty or thirty, but let me see if I get to three of them. Council, mayor, staff, uh, good evening. Gas system, emergency generators, airport zoning, and future runway. We're about two weeks out for early voting on this. We really know very little details about the choices that we have, and that seems to be quite rushed. My thought is to keep it and keep our expenses under our control instead of some outside entity. We're gonna pay the bills either way, no matter who owns it, we're gonna end up paying for it. I also heard in the last council video, a very long video, the city was supposed to be swapping out ten percent of the metal pipes each year, and we were about three years behind, uh, behind doing that, and I'm wondering how, uh, how could we let that happen, uh, on a project that, uh, that critical? Emergency generator, Texas passed, uh, Senate Bill Three after a big freeze, which required critical infrastructure such as wastewater, water treatment plant, and so forth, be able to continue functioning after a significant and extended interruption in electricity. I asked the city and found out that we're actually in pretty good shape on, uh, on, on the vast majority of our stuff other than water wells, and so that's good. But we're not good on the two primary water wells that we need on this side of the river to keep the tank on the hill filled and the lines pressurized. I understand we have applied for grant funding, grants, but those are never guaranteed. Hoping something happens is not a sound strategic or tactical plan, especially when we consider the importance of keeping the water flowing. A completed plan on how we have complied with S P three, from what I read, should have been completed already by the city, and I would like to see that. We absolutely need to make emergency generators a top priority, regardless if we get the grant money or not. We can move money around and make internal loans. I know we can do it. As a start, find out which well does the most good and get that done with automatic transfer system installed on the other one. That will put us well down the road of ensuring we can function without outs, outside power and probably keep T C Q off our back again. Airport zoning in the future, state law requires us to be part of a city council joint airport zoning group. After the first group was disestablished, the city spent significant funds to come up with a zoning map that only applies to properties in the city limits, even though county land is within that map area. I spoke to County Judge Lutz today, and he is certainly willing to go to the county commissioners and explore forming a new group with Castroville. That really is the only way to be in compliance with state law and protect the airport impacted property owners in the, in the map zone. Our discussion on the six thousand foot one-way and winding to a hundred and fifty feet, absolutely unnecessary. We peeled that onion a long time ago, and five thousand and one feet and seventy-five feet wide is perfect for what this airport is and needs to continue to be to serve the size aircraft that are compatible with Castroville. So I recommend you send your issues and questions to the advisory board and let them come back with facts and recommendations. They will answer the questions on whether the city should reduce the potential future six thousand foot length, which reduced the properties impacted by the zoning map. To actually extend the runway to the south would be astronomically expensive without financial payback. You could explore a displaced threshold on the north end to increase critical takeoff distance, and that is the issue that the insurance companies really care about. And Lafayette Street, boy, I heard y'all talk about that last week, and that is an interesting piece of work. Uh, over ten years ago, the county put a cold asphalt overlay on a number of streets, including Constantinople, La Croix, a low-water crossing. Over ten years, that overlay they did is still in good shape. And so if you'd like to save the embarrassment of everybody making fun of, of Lafayette, let's see if you can get the county to put a cold overlay on that sucker, and it, it should be in good shape. Thank you very much. I hope we have another eclipse tomorrow, so there's no way to cross Highway ninety.
Thank you, sir. Uh, would anybody else like to speak for public, uh, citizens' comments? All right. Uh, next item is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, regular called city council meeting, and to accept the resignation of Sarah Sanders from the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion from Councilman Carey and a second from Councilwoman Martinez. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is mayor's report. Uh, can I get the presentation?
This word?
Nope. No, I need the. Do you have the U S B C?
Well, uh, that's what plugs in right there, right?
For the.
Oh, for that, that.
The U S B A is only for the power. Perfect. And U S B A is required for power, right?
Yes. Power.
I do not like this setup.
We're looking at the router, it says zero people connected.
Hey, we got the password on that now.
Yeah.
Well, I used to not have the little dots.
That's an easy password, just work with eight, eight stars.
Try it.
All right, one moment.
That would be a really good terrible password.
How do you make the capital?
All right, there we go. All right, today on the mayor's report, we have updates on Highway 90. We have the Uniform Development Ordinance updates and some information on the Alsatian Festival and the Reach Winning Ceremony. We also have a slight little insert, because I came up with some additional information I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of. Eclipse 2024 went off. It was not as busy as we expected, and I don't think that we have an issue with that. We had a great fiorella Friday. Saturday was a, I guess, a little, what did we do?
Congested?
It was a little bit congested, yeah. It was a little congested all weekend, I think. Monday was pretty substantial. I want to commend our officers and honestly, our county. They had great coordination across the county, working with DPS, with our city cops, with county cops, the county deputies, and they just, they did a phenomenal job. Out of all of that stuff, I understand we had one accident, which is not bad for all of that. So you guys did a great job. Thank you for getting out there, and we had all the hands on deck. I think we had eight officers out through that. Chief was very efficient in making sure that, he was very efficient in making sure that we limited overtime by doing some staggered shifts, so he was cost-conscious, and I think that it was a real, overall, I'm very excited. I was a little bit scared about the potential negative impact of all those people, so we got out of that pretty unscathed. It was pretty cool, too, except it was a little completely cloud cover. Tour to Casterville is coming up this Saturday. There is information on the website, too, and I think the chambers site as well, on getting registered for that, so please get out there while riding a bike. It's a cool event. And then we also have the Alsis Film Festival, and this is specifically benefiting our kids. We already have a number of applicants. If you want more information, if you look on the city's website, at the very bottom, there's a little scrolling thing, it'll give you some more information about how the kids can get registered for it, how it benefits. It's a pretty cool thing, thanks to Darren Hamm for helping put that together and really thinking how, about how we can benefit our kids, leveraging some of the resources that we have here in the city. And let's see, I guess some brief, it sounds like we got for middle school, we've got best picture, high school, best picture, college, best picture, and adult, we also have the best picture, best actor, best sound, and best visuals. Okay, updates on Highway 90. So this is, I think this is actually from Marcus, who took this.
Yeah, our side doesn't show, except I'm done with dots.
Is that the whole time it's been that way?
Yeah, we're creating it, show the puppies with the positive side and then model.
Boy, that's weird. It's different.
Do you want to try and fix that really quickly?
Well, I can try turning it on and off, or usually try using this one instead of that one.
Well, this connects into, modularly connects into both TVs, right?
So the cords, yeah, they cut off this one, too.
Thanks for letting us know. Appreciate that.
Technology.
And you were saying Marcus took the...
I think it was Marcus. I actually stole, plagiarized it off of Facebook. So this is what Casterville looks like. Can you guys see this now?
See traffic and I think it's on the right.
Perfect. Okay, I'm glad the traffic, that traffic has gone anyway. So, the USDOT has been doing a study of US 90 soup to nuts. I'll give you a little bit more information. We've been working on this for quite some time now. This just kind of shows you, over on the left-hand side, it's which groups are working on it during which times. We've got round three that we are just finishing up, and I'll give you a little bit more details on that in just a little bit. We've already had a number of different meetings with, we have regional stakeholders, we have the Tech dot, their consulting group. There's a very large number of people that are working on this. We are getting ready to go into round four. We just had our last meeting last Tuesday, and I'll give you a little bit more detail on that. If you want to find out more information about this study, the website address is up on the top, and if you just do a, if you want to do a search on the internet for US 90 Texas Corridor Study Stakeholder Schedule, you can find out some more information.
Put it on the website for the study?
Potentially, yeah.
As the one?
Yeah, potentially. We don't have a great way for putting up a bunch of these different things, and so I think that it would be, yeah, I agree with you. I think it would be helpful for people to know. So, right now, this is, you had round one and round two. Those happened quite some time ago. Then you had, they went through, basically they took input. I don't know if any of you got a chance to fill out the survey online. We put it out over a number of different channels where you could go and actually submit for your pain points with Highway 90. So we had a bunch of citizens comments, we had a bunch of elected officials. Our Tech dot representative, Clayton Rips, did a phenomenal job on several of the calls, on calling out what the real issues were, when they were happening, so he really represented us very well. I was very pleased with that. And we have just, we just finished up round three. That's where we are now. We went through and looked at all of the projects. They had, I think, 50 different projects for the central region on which, which things they felt would be prudent in the different areas, and so the working team went through, and we looked at each different area. We looked at, there was one team that was looking at basically, I think it was 211 West, and one that was looking 211 East, and Bear County was kind of back and forth between the two. And for these, we were trying to figure out which ones were short-term, midterm, and long-term plans. This is to show you kind of the overall project, so we're working on the needs right now. We knew that this was going to be a very long-term project. We're trying to work on some other short-term fixes as we go, and there's some other updates with US 90 and what's happening here locally, but for something like this, this is an entire corridor study. It's a very long process. So we identified the need. Now we'll go through and assess the needs, program funding. We identified a bunch of different projects, and none of them have funding, so that'll be a week to a year. Advanced planning, another year or two. Environmental studies, they say three months to three years. I would say it's probably much closer to the latter. And then design right-of-way utilities and other preparation, couple of years, and then the implementation and instruction, construction. So it's a long-term process, and if you have any questions after this, please get in touch with us, and we'd be happy to get you caught up with it. With any of this stuff, if you ever have questions, please reach out to staff or council members or myself. Happy to go through this stuff in more detail, and love to get some of your feedback with that. So, this was the main project. This was identified, so there were only two projects that they had identified in our section of it. There were a number of them that were identified all the way from Del Rio to 211 on our section of this. This was option number 34. We had a 34 and I think 38, and this one was the one that the group deemed was the most necessary. I was actually a little bit disappointed, because I saw all of the different areas in Del Rio, in Uvalde, and even in Dehness, and Hondo, they had a number of different things that they had identified. Sabanal also had some things, and each one of these had like very specific items that were identified, and then we got to Casterville, and I'm like, you know, the only thing for Casterville is dealing with the park and ride, making it longer entrance and exit to the park and ride, and I'm like, I don't know that that's really high priority for us. And then we got to this one, and they're like, so we've gone through individual details in the smaller areas, but what we really need for, for all of the cities, I loved the way that he put it. This was the Tech dot consultant, engineer. He said, "We have this string of pearls that go all the way from 211 out to Uvalde that we need to figure out, how do we get around this?" Because each one of these are cities like ourselves, we're the worst impacted by this because of the volume of traffic that's here, but as you go out, Hondo and Dehness and Sabanal, all the way through, each one of these is going to have issues going forward, and so they're going to look at each one. They'll look at how do they deal with, they want to have one entire corridor, and right now it's fairly straight, but they said with Casterville, maybe the best bet is to go north, and maybe with Hondo, the best bet's to go south, but we need to do a soup-to-nuts study on this and figure out where the best areas are to do the actual US 90. With the rest of them, we're still working with Tech dot on, it's not, it's not a one-shot pony. This is what they're looking at, because they want to have continuity all the way through, and they know that they have a choke point specifically in Casterville and specifically in Hondo where they cannot widen. So I just, I commend them that they were this proactive with it, and they identified, everybody agreed, that it's less than five years for the study alone. That is not for the engineering, that is not for the definition. This is a very long-term project that hopefully happens in my lifetime, but I can't guarantee it. But we're getting the ball moving and at least getting this done, and we challenged them with how do we actually get the funding for it, and they are, they're like, that's the problem. So that's, as we're going through all of this US 90 study, we're going to be going through that. Again, more details, please give me a holler. There's so many details, there's no way I could go through this. I already took a lot of time on that. The building block project of Casterville, so I like the way that Simple Cities put this. It's building the future of Casterville built on the blocks of the past. So they're taking what we already have and saying, how do we repeat this? How do we not change what we have? Because everybody that comes in wants to build San Antonio. They want to build the things that are in like the US codes, the things that, that aren't really Casterville, and so to do that, they had to study that. They asked a lot of questions. They asked some questions that freaked people out, because they're like, no, we don't want to do that. But that's exactly why they asked it, because they wanted to find out what people wanted, what they didn't want. So there's been great public input from this. I really commend each and every one of you. I see pretty much everybody in here has been to at least one of those and many of them, so please continue with that. Here we are in the timeline. So we finished up the DNA roundup last year. The Casterville dreaming was in January. We just finished up the design rodeo. They, they put out, they took input from people, and they put that into practice, and they put it out into maps and asked people to confirm, is this what we've heard? And we, we found a couple of areas where they, they did some tweaking right there on the spot, so it was a good exercise to go through. Now, this Friday, they're going to be doing a Wakaba code tour. We're going to meet up here at City Hall at 6:00 PM, and it's really, for those of you that have gone through all of the rest, it's just putting it, you've probably already heard these things, but we'll go on a walking tour for them to give you just, instead of going through a slideshow, they'll point out each one actually on a walking tour. Please invite your friends and your neighbors. I think this would be a good time for them to go through and ask questions and understand the direction that they're taking, talking. This was in your utility bill, so if anybody wants more details on that, you can either just show up here at 6, call into City Hall, call your, your elected officials, or look at your utility bill and find that. The next code rodeo, so basically they'll take all of the input and all of the feedback. There is still, I put the website address up on the top, and this is available on the planning section of our website, and that is casterville.mysocialpinpoint.com. They have a project for us. You can still give input, I don't know when the, I think the input still goes for another few weeks.
The questions from the last project, or the last meetings are not up yet.
Right, they haven't put those up, but I think that there are still areas to feedback. I think they said they needed a few weeks to get those up, so.
Yeah, I don't know. They took down the previous round of questions.
Oh, they did already? Okay, I didn't see that. Thank you. Thanks for checking on that.
I check this every day.
Nice. I like that. So the next one that we'll go through is the code rodeo, so it's taking all of what they've heard, all of what they've learned, all of the feedback, and showing us what that looks like actually in a code, so that we can see what that code looks like. That'll be sometime in September. As soon as we nail that down, we'll get the information out. It will be in your utility bill, in the newspaper, on social media, and however else we can get that out. Anybody that has signed up for the notifications, you can also sign up for notifications on this website to have them let you know what's going on with it. And then we have the Alsatian Festival and Reach Winning Ceremony. So we had a twinning ceremony. Totally familiar with this. We have, just as you go into the customer service area, there's the, the different components of the original twinning that happened in 2009 with Insasign, our sister city there. We've got the official folder. I think that Charlie Boyce was the one that went to, to Alsis to do the signing there, and then they came here, and Bob Lee was on that, he was mayor then. So we are doing Mayor Hobbig, who was mayor back then and still mayor now, and I think he's been there since 1995. He'll be coming here with about four dozen Alsatians. The number keeps growing. So they are coming here at the very end of the month to coincide with the Alsatian Festival. We're having the Alsatian Festival the very last Saturday in, in April, so please come out for that. It's always a great time. And then we'll have the Reach Winning Ceremony the next day, the last Sunday of April, at Houston Square. It'll be the official ceremony and, and gathering and celebration of the twinning of the two cities. It's at 5 o'clock. I said 6 o'clock. Don't show up at 6:00. It's at 5 o'clock. Okay, great. That's all I got. I missed something.
Flyer that Amanda sent about Friday night, the old city, 6:00.
6:00 at the bakery. Oh, you're right. You're absolutely right. Cool, thank you. Oops.
So it's this Friday?
This Friday, yes.
This Friday, the bakery, not City Hall.
Right.
I was adding it to my calendar, too, because I didn't have it on.
You had 6:00 in there.
No, it's at 6:00. The twinning was at 5:00.
The twinning's at 5:00.
The bakery at 6:00. The bakery down there.
And we'll have people, we'll have people at City Hall and over there to make sure that people get to where they need to go.
That's the one you give.
Yeah, I turned it off. It's done. We're going to hand it back over here. So the next item is the City Council Board Liaison Reports. The Airport Advisory Board had no meeting, is that correct?
No, I believe it was Friday.
Okay.
Correct. I just want to put a plug in, though, that we are looking for a part-time airport manager.
Then we have the Historic Landmark Commission. That was March 19.
I was out of town, but Priscilla and Houston Marchman from there are sitting here, so.
Yeah, a couple of the things that we sent you all from...
The Genonite.
Yes.
Did you have?
Design.
Well, I know, were there two properties that you reviewed?
Yes, two properties that we reviewed. One of them is discussed, closed on the industry, but she has fixed it without us having to go back, like, to her, um, office.
And Phil promises he'll get the download after the next one if he can't show up, so he can give the report.
Download.
Oh, yeah, on Allo, on Allo, where they're having open years on things doing, and they showed up.
Thank you. Next is the Library Advisory Board from March 14.
The library board met, and they went over the library activity reports and the Friends of the Library report before briefly discussing the proposed library building extensions. And then they skipped a bunch of items because they did not have the materials ready for them.
Next is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, March 20.
They had a meeting in here on March the 20th. In that meeting, we learned that Sarah Sanders was going to resign her position because she's taken a job and can no longer dedicate the amount of time to be on the board. I'd like to just publicly thank her for her service. She's been on the board a long time, and she's been a great contributor. So if anybody's interested in participating, there's a vacancy on the board. The board is still working on the survey. They hope to have it available soon for the public to participate in. They spent a great deal of time talking about irrigation of grass and trees in the Regional Park, Lyons Park, September Square, and Houston Park. They really didn't conclude anything, but they've, they've initiated a lot of discussion, and hopefully by the next meeting, they will be prepared to make a recommendation to the city council. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
May I make one other note?
Yes, please.
It was brought to my attention that a lot of the library boards' minutes had not made it onto the city website, so they're kind of circling back and getting the approved minutes signed and uploaded, but everyone else might want to check on their boards' minutes as well.
One's in it, too.
Yes.
Yes. Have a little glitch there, probably.
Well, we have boards that turn over and...
I think you have a new secretary.
Yeah, people just don't always hear.
And then finally, Planning and Zoning Commission on March 21st.
Planning and Zoning Mission did meet, or Commission did meet, and...
Planning and Zoning Mission did meet, or Commission did meet and reviewed the interim guidelines for development that we'd sent them to review. They produced a list of things that they thought ought to be addressed. The general feeling that I got was that they thought it might be a little bit of, we may be too much in the weeds on that and had too specific recommendations and so we need to review that. I think they also mentioned something about a workshop. So I don't know if you started working on that, but it's on here.
Yeah, it's on here.
Yep.
Great, all right, thank you. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on an ordinance amending Chapter 106 Traffic Engineering, specifically Chapter 106 Article 5 Parking, to amend parking zones for commercial vehicles on Southern Oak and Alsatian Oaks Parkway. And I want to just call out the, the reason that we're looking at this in the middle of a code rewrite is because this is an immediate need since we have these semis that are parking out there, they're dropping their, their point loads, they're leaving their trailers there, and we're very concerned with, first of all, the damage to the streets that we will then have to repair and replace because the city will own those streets, but also because of the safety issue of having semis that are parking along there. So most of the, most of the stuff we will put off unless it is an immediate need like this, and so this is something we put in front of the Planning and Zoning, and I'll let Scott take it from there.
Honestly, I don't know that there's much more for staff to add at this point. This, we're adding the two streets to our, our prohibition of commercial parking and that's Southern Oaks and Alsatian Parkway.
Didn't the board ask that someone to park there? That was my understanding.
And if I could, I apologize. That's okay. Please contact, please contact us afterward. Thank you. So we have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning to approve the, we don't have the actual motion on here. So it is to approve the.
It should be ordinance amending the commercial parking restrictions.
As written in here. So do I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 106 Traffic.
Article 5. I move we approve the ordinance as it's prepared in the read-ahead package.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Dyer, a second by Councilman Carey. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say one thing.
Yes, please.
I really would like to compliment Planning and Zoning Board and the city staff for moving this along in a very efficient manner. It's taken us a long time, but it hasn't really taken us a long time. It's been done as fast as it could have been done. And I think this is a very important step forward, not only to protect the streets, especially Southern Oak, which is really being adversely affected, but I think it's going to help improve the sales of the homes in Alsatian Oaks because prospective homeowners won't have to drive through a gauntlet of trucks parked on the highway to get to their prospective house. So thank you all for your work and I appreciate very much what you've done.
Thanks, sir. Any further discussion? Did you have something before?
Just to build on that, you may recall that the developer had put up some no parking signs. Those no mark parking signs as of tonight's action will now be legal and they will be returned to the developer and he can put those back up. So I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Great.
Well, yeah, we need to probably put some back. I think those were removed by others, but.
I never saw any on.
Yeah, we had three or four up. I, I think they disappeared pretty quickly, so we need to get those put back up. And we'll probably put them in concrete this time. I think that's part of the issue. These weren't in concrete either.
So once this bill, if it gets approved and gets signed by the mayor, is it, when does it become effective?
He's asking when they can start writing tickets.
When can they write tickets?
Yeah, the effective date's like 60 days. They have to wait, it's your period of time.
The effective date is after approval and publication because this is kind of, you know, how it's going to be if people do not comply with requirements.
Is your period of time after publication? No.
It'll be put in next week by persons this week, so.
Thursday.
Great. All right, I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, this makes me, this reminds me. Deborah, on the next City Board Liaison Report, can we add on the Economic Development Corporation as, as one of the boards on there? And we have two of the council people and myself, and I can just do that one since they're already doing reports on other ones. Okay. I know that's a little, just reminding me on this. Okay, so this one with the, the item is consider and take appropriate action on appointing Harrison Vaughn to the Castleville Economic Development Corporation. And this one is slightly different. We, because again, we do have two council people and myself on the Economic Development Board. That is an open meeting, by the way, and those are published. Had, we had Aaron Padilla, who had taken a job over in San Antonio. He'd actually reached out afterward. We didn't hear from him for a little bit and just assumed that he was not continuing. And so the board had talked about who they felt could be, who was already a good part of the community, somebody that was already invested in the community and could help us with any kind of economic development recommendation. Harrison Vaughn was one of the, the two primary people that came up and that was the one that the board had decided on. And because of the, the involvement of City Council on that one, we're moving it straight forward to ask to have him appointing, appointing Harrison Vaughn. Harrison Vaughn, for those who don't know, is the, I think his title is the General Manager and Partner in the Chevy dealership, in North Park Chevy. He does a lot of things out in the community.
He lists owner among those.
List owner, perfect.
Also, I did reach out to him. He wasn't able to attend tonight. His son, I think, had a program at school and so, but he was appreciative of being asked.
Great. Yeah, I talked to him and he was, he had applied for the airport, the airport board and we had chosen instead, instead a local resident who was impacted by any kind of things that were happening around there. But I was very impressed that he was stepping. I really wanted to make sure that we had somebody. And the other, the other individual did as well. This was just, we wanted to give him the opportunity to start getting, getting involved where he hadn't had the opportunity to do that before. So do I have a motion to appoint Harrison Vaughn to the Castleville Economic Development Corporation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion by Councilman Carey, a second by Councilwoman Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item is consider and take appropriate action on applications submitted for open positions on City Board and Commission and discussion on board appointment process. Last week, we had reviewed Marcus Fuentes and Ed Escavell, Edward Escavell, and we have two open positions, so we've already reviewed those. Deborah, do you want to go over what we have? So we have two alternate positions still available.
We do. Alternate number one, that term is till 2025. The second alternate is similar to the one on the full board from last week. It runs out in June 2024, so if you choose to put someone in that position, at this time, it would be recommended for the two-year position ending in 2026. In this process, I know, and I believe Mr. Dyer pointed that out last meeting, that Mr. Fuentes needs to make, I guess, a official decision or his intentions, because he is on zoning board of adjustment right now and he has not submitted, yes, his resignation for that.
Okay.
I know he did say he would do that, but he has not officially done that, so that may be something you consider. You could always consider him at a later date once he submits that.
Okay.
Yeah, his, his mother just passed away, so.
I saw that. I saw that.
Could you approve him and, and say that it's going to require his resignation?
If you chose to.
He has to resign?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he has to resign first, right?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what.
So that position would still, there'd still be a position open if you, if you chose to go ahead and put Mr. Esteban.
Escavell.
That was almost.
Escavell.
That was a senior, I think, but if you chose to.
She calls me Snyder. Deborah.
But if you chose to choose to go ahead and make a determination tonight.
So let's wait until we hear back from Marcus on that one. We still do have the open board position. So then, do I have a motion to appoint Ed Escavell to one of the two positions that are open?
Moved, I would move to appoint Eduardo Escavell to position one of the alternate positions on the.
Is that firing when?
The 2025 term?
That's the 2025 term.
You want to do that one and not the one that ends in 2026?
It's a matter of a couple of months.
No, the 2025 is not, is a year's term and then the, that's alternate number one. Alternate number two would be the one for a two-year term.
Revised that to, to appoint him to the 2024 term with a two-year extension.
Okay, alternate number two.
All right.
Position two.
So I have a motion by Councilman Carey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. A second by Councilwoman Martinez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for letting me know.
Ed, congratulations and I'm sorry. No, it's good. I always appreciate the people that are willing to step up. It's, it can be tough and sometimes thankless, but we need this. We really need people to, to step up for things like this, so thank you. I'm thanking you too, because like all of you guys. All right. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on setting a date for a joint meeting of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission for discussion on the draft development agreement policy. My thoughts on this is, it's probably easiest just to go ahead and do this. Well, I don't know. Is it best to do it during a council meeting and have, have that? We want to do this as a workshop?
I would suggest either calling a separate meeting as a workshop or potentially doing it on the date of a regularly scheduled P&amp;Z meeting.
Okay.
The only issue there is that the P&amp;Z may have to, to do their regular meeting, take care of their regular business, and then do the combined workshop. Or you could do, set the meeting, you know, a workshop for prior to, earlier in the day. Although I think typically they're, they have some difficulty meeting earlier, so.
We probably want to set it on a different.
Yeah, either call a totally separate day or try, or that would be my recommendation.
Did the board have any, any suggestions for when that might happen?
No, we didn't, we figured you'd probably set the date and give, or throw out several dates and we'll try to coordinate.
Okay.
But they didn't, we didn't try to do any calendaring until we wanted to put it, one, it's really up to you whether to do it in the first place. And then if you want to do it and you're supportive of that, then you tell us what you'd like to do.
I think that that supports their efforts to go ahead and follow through with a workshop and I would like to see it on a separate date, not on the coinciding date with another meeting.
All right. We should probably do it just to meet up with everybody's schedules in the evening? Is that?
Agreed.
Okay. Why don't we do something in the next couple of weeks? Are we able to get, because I think part of this is having our consultants available even just over the web to, to talk about, you know, some of the implications of this. That way, one of, one of the struggles I have sometimes is when you're making these decisions, making sure that we've got the implications understood between both, both sets. So do you want to?
Work with Simple City and see when they're available, or?
Yeah, and I don't think they need to come all the way out here. I think it'd be fine for them to, to, to visit remotely. And just because it would be in a consultative manner, just so if people had questions about what is the actual implication, we would want to have probably the, the city attorney available for any kind of legal questions. But I guess you've already, have you already looked at the, we're talking about the development agreement policy. This is, and what we're talking about really is, is the development agreement policy that once we're through all the codes and ordinances, this almost is not necessary. It is still necessary because it will define when and why we would give incentives to developers for doing better things, where those, where those limits are and where the kind of, where the breaking points are between the different things that we might offer for them to do better things and what they are.
So Mayor, we, we have previously reviewed that document. We had given it the legal lifting in the format it was initially presented in. However, most of what needs to be discussed is policy decision.
Okay.
And so, I mean, to the extent that you would like us there, we're more than happy to. If you need us there just to, to, you know, be on standby for a phone call or to zoom in, we can do that as well.
Okay. I think actually, I forgot that you had provided that, that feedback. I think that it's okay that we take that as long as we've got our city planners there to do that. Are there any times?
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
When, when is the next P&amp;Z meeting, since we know most of that board should be available then? And how busy is that meeting going to be? It's going to be a fairly short meeting. And if our schedule's all.
It's not made, it's kind of, we have a meeting.
Okay, then that. Bill King.
Well, let's try and do it. On that meeting, do we have a discussion about this, the policy?
No, it's mostly public hearings for the class.
Okay.
Sometimes those are contacts, sometimes they don't.
All right. Well, let's try and do it before, let's try and do it before that meeting. And maybe if we can just coordinate over email on what the timing is, let's find out from Simple City. I mean, we've got four weeks to choose from.
Well, but remember, we have our town hall meetings for getting ready for the election.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of.
So that's why I was thinking, all right, if they meet on the 8th, maybe the 6th or 7th.
Yeah, end of the month, at the end of the month, you've got the Alsatian Festival and the twinning, and in between now and then, you've got the.
Town hall meeting.
Town hall meeting.
To discuss the gases.
We've scheduled one, we haven't scheduled the other one.
But are we here quick?
Okay.
Yeah.
And the P&amp;Z is on Wednesday?
The 8th.
The 8th.
That's why I was looking at the 6th or the 7th.
I agree.
Okay.
The 6th is the airport meeting?
Yeah, I know.
I don't think that's a difference, but the 7th was.
So the 7th.
Let's try and do it on the 7th.
The 7th is a Tuesday, yeah.
What about 6?
May 7th.
She said it was the airport and.
No, on Monday, but the 7th, what about 6?
But will Mr. King and Mr. Dyer be out?
Oh, 6 on the 7th. Not 7 on the 6, but 6 on the 7th.
You have two council people that's going to be out, I think, or at least one. When are you leaving?
I'm leaving the 8th.
Okay, so you're here, but you're gone.
The airport thing's on the 7th?
No, 6.
The first Monday.
6.
The 6.
6, right. So the 7th's available.
If they have a meeting.
Okay. So let's reach out to P&amp;Z and Simple City and see if that's okay. And then Herb, you said that you're going to be on, on that day?
Yeah, I'm going from the 6th to the 21st.
Okay. Well, let's, we can sync up on that specifically and I can convey anything that you want[1615.75] Okay. Well, let's, we can sync up on that specifically, and I can convey anything that you want me to convey.
If you're going to broadcast it, I might be able to watch it.
Sure. Okay. If there's any input, because what they're, like with so many different things, they're saying, we're trying to help out with this policy, but we don't know what your priorities are. And so let's just, you and I can sit down and talk about what your priorities are on that, so that I can convey that. We'll write it down, and that way it's, it's verbatim. Okay. Sound good?
I had a few questions relative to their feedback on the draft development agreement policy. That'd be okay?
Are we able to?
I don't. Literally the assignment is only setting a date.
I think it's only to set the date, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you need to send those directly to the commission. I don't think any of us can answer those.
We'll send that back through Scott and Cynthia, if that's okay?
I mean, they, they were just questions about the, like, because.
I know, we can talk about it. Let's, let's talk about it afterward. We'll figure out the right form to be able to do that. And we'll make sure that we have that available during that meeting to be able to talk about it. All right. Great. Next item is discussion and possible action on historic landmark commission street sign request. Oh, you need to, you have the, I have a little one.
No, I wasn't raising my hand.
Yeah, I figured that this was your item, kind of, but then you told me it wasn't.
This, this is Darren.
That was an interesting, nobody claimed it. But it's very important.
Nobody claimed it, so Brianna just picked it out.
I blame, I blame you, so it must have been Brianna.
Very important.
So here I am.
With Houston's help.
Yeah, it says it should be transferred. They did the whole white pop.
There we go.
Sorry, I don't have it in PowerPoint. I just have it in PDF. Hi, good evening. Sorry, I have a, I talked too much yesterday, so now I have no voice for today. But it was fun at the airport for the solar eclipse, so everything. At our last HLC meeting, it came up about maybe getting some historic street signs, not historic street signs, street signs for the historic district, sorry. And, and the historic walking tour.
Historically, we didn't have street signs.
No, exactly. Yeah, so not historic street signs. We don't have those. So these are some concepts that Darren Hamm, he's already been kind of working on this. So he presented them to our Historic Landmark Commission. And they had a chance to review them, and then they came up with some ideas of where they think that these signs should go. And so this right here would be the street sign for the actual historic walking tour. This is not for the whole historic district. This would just be for where the walking tour is at. And the smaller walking tour, I think there's always been a larger walking tour, but once Darren Hamm came on, he condensed it because the other one was just too long. And so this would be for the smaller walking tour. And then also Fiorella to Parrish Street, where, you know, Magnolia all the way down to Blue Lacy BBQ. This is the one that they thought would be nice in just the historic district, not necessarily where the historic walking tour is at. The reason why this come about is because you see the signs over in Alstation Oaks and how beautiful they are. They really bring a presence to the community. And I do think that if we brought that over here to the historic side of Castroville, it would be so beautiful. And it would also help in tourism and all those kinds of things. And that's how HLC feels as well. This is right here. These are the signs that are in Alstation Oaks. They want to mimic, they don't want, this could also be, you know, like a nod. I guess they would be nodding to us if we put them over here. With these poles, the acorn on the top, the stand on the bottom, it would have the same look and feel. These are the ones, they didn't have any issues with the existing poles and structure inside of Alstation Oaks. So that's what they're presenting. And then here, don't look at the numbers. No, I'm just kidding. You have to look at the numbers. But this is kind of the phases that they thought. So the first phase is, like I said, that, that historic walking tour, that's the ones in the yellow. And then the ones in the pink is the entire historic district. It could be done in two phases, but HLC is requesting at least phase one. But I think if they could get approval for all of it, they would love that as well. They're afraid that, if, if we're being honest, they're afraid that something will happen and this will get passed for the phase one. But then the, not the ball will get dropped, but it wouldn't move forward to the second phase for whatever reason. Future council, something like that. So as you can see, phase one is $39,000. And then phase, phase two is $61,000, coming up to a total of $100,000. In addition to the 39. These are just food for thought. This is not included in that cost, but these are other things that were talked about during the Historic Landmark Commission. So we have these existing, we have a ton of street poles. They were thinking that having this sign on maybe every other block, that would be like a nice entrance onto our Fiorella, Fiorella Fridays, people coming in. It really designics the street. But these are not included in the cost estimate, but they're just thoughts that they think would really like bring life to the streets. And this is what they potentially could use for the historic walking tour. Have those QR codes, so people who want to do the historic walking tour that necessarily can't find a tour guide, they can scan that and they can do the tour themselves. And it's a good tourism aspect to it, too. So we do have two members from HLC here. I don't know if y'all want to say anything additional, but this is what they're requesting from City Council.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, let me, let me start with you, I guess. Councilman Dar.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, what's, who's going to do the installation and what's it going to cost?
So this, the cost does not include installation, so they were thinking maybe our street guys, or we would have to contract that out, which would be an additional cost. But that is not included in the cost right now.
But you're asking us to, appropriate action, no, wait a minute. Yeah, appropriate action.
Yeah.
So you're asking us to approve something and you don't even know what it's going to cost? That's, that's my first point.
Okay.
My second point is I think this is a wonderful idea. I think this is a very good addition. We already see how well it looks out in Alstation Oaks. But I don't understand why it's not in the CIP. And I'm opposed to spending $100,000 plus installation, which could be significant, and bumping it ahead of everything that's in the CIP that everybody's been working to keep moving up. We keep putting things in ahead of the things that we've been trying to move up. And I think that's a bad, it's bad for them. It's bad for the people that have been trying to get their projects every year into the CIP. And I think we should put this in the CIP and treat it like every other project. And then when we do the analysis and our, our plan for the CIP for the next budget, it should be discussed. But I'm opposed to just sticking it ahead of everything, even though it's a great idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. So who, so that there, I remember from previous meetings, there are taxes from hotels that can only be used for hotels and tourism. Could those be used for some or all of this? I don't know how, any, how much.
I, I think part of the question is where, where is the funding for this, proposed funding for this coming from?
I had other ideas, like we have the downtown TERS that potentially.
Yeah, you have a couple of different funding sources that you could try to, try to leverage. One would be the downtown TERS. I don't know how much money that, that's in it now. But this could potentially be a project that, that the TERS takes on, that has to be approved.
Because not all of this is in that TERS area.
Correct. Yeah, you're, you're right. It'd have to be the, the area covered by the TERS. There's a proportion of it is, but the ones that wouldn't would not be. But that will be, has something that that TERS board would have to approve. As far as the question about the use of hotel tax funds, I, I would not recommend it for this. I don't know if you, I mean, there are a lot of cities that use funds for projects like this, that use hotel tax funds for projects like this. And I hate to say it the way, but they kind of get away with it, if you will, because there's not really an audit process for that. But generally speaking, the way that rule gets applied is if it helps to put heads in beds directly. So an event, I mean, there's pretty prescriptive things within the law. And this is where I'll lend to Cindy more than myself to clarify it. But bottom line is, you know, it, it needs to lead, lead directly to something, heads in beds. This is more passive marketing. And so my recommendation would not to be use those funds, but ultimately the city probably could. And, and really, you'd have to just worry about whether your local hotels would object to the use of the funds for this project. That's historically what's been the, the driving factor of whether it was or was not an issue for a city.
Right. So signage is one of the categories. And while I agree with Scott sometimes that, that signage has been the, the issue for y'all, and why it fits under that category is your signage is for the historic district and, you know, that's part of your historic preservation plan and such. And so while it's not directly tied to specific historic preservation, your historic district has this, is part of your tourism plan, right? And so these specific types of signs would qualify under the limited categories, you know, of, of permitted spending your help. Given that we look on there, whether it's a good idea, you know, based on everything else, policy decision.
Great. All right. Thank you. Councilmember, anything else?
Two more things. I think it showed the, the walking tour sign on the back of a stop sign. I don't think that's actually something you're allowed to do, have signs on the back of a stop sign like that.
Okay.
Just a, a small thing.
Okay.
My, my impulse would be rather than to approve this all at once, to say, this is something we're interested in, and to just say that, you know, anytime we repave a road or we have to replace a sign because it got ran into, we should upgrade to these, but not necessarily commit to a giant expense all at once. Unless, of course, people wanted to donate to get the one on their corner done. I think that's kind of what we're doing with the sewer covers, the manhole covers. We have a special stamped one with the signature logo, and we're just replacing them when we get to that manhole cover for one reason or another, rather than going out and doing them all at once.
Correct.
Another thought that came up during the Historic Landmark Commission meeting was that, because there's a lot of business owners that are right here, potentially going to those business owners and asking them if they want to put funds towards one of the signs, because these are going to be right here on their street in front of their businesses, making, you know, their walkways look pretty for the people that come up and down the streets. So.
Great. And you had one other thing?
Oh, sorry.
Well, that, that was actually two, but I guess just one last comment is I wouldn't necessarily see the need to limit this to just that part of town. One day, every street intersection in Castroville could have nice signs. Especially if we were doing a more graduated rollout of them. I think it'd be nice for everyone, not just the people who live right there.
Thank you.
I get, I'm sorry, I just had a picture in my head of people purposely hitting our signs.
Oh, yeah.
You said that out loud.
I said it out loud. Or maybe I was thinking of hitting my sign.
Well, I really like it because all the yellows are in my district, so that's. I, I guess fundamentally, I, I realize that, that Darren, you'd come up with this new walking tour because it's shorter. But we also, you know, historically have the Chambers walking tour that's tied into their, their magazine that turned out. It's tied into their fund rates difference. And is this going to, have we talked to the Chamber about the fact that there's two tours now if we, if we do this? Because, you know, we have all these signs around town that the city's paid for that says historic walking tour, tied into something that's developed by the Chamber to assess them in putting out these. It's a community service. That's a great community. I mean, I think everybody, if they haven't, they should. And it talks about the history of Castroville and everything else. But they're going to be kind of in conflict with each other, I think. And I think, I guess, and I know how you're always concerned about us working well with the Chamber, but I don't. Because this is the first time I actually realized that we're going to have two different walking tour signs out there. If you go with not, and I'm not talking about the street signs, but I'm talking about the walking.
The actual walk-in tour signs.
So I, because I, again, as you know from the very beginning, I like this idea. But my, my vision from the very beginning was that there would be these designated street signs. And of course, I guess this, this does encompass the historic areas of town. Because we'd have to put them in every, in the total historic district. So that is, the purples, does that cover all the historic areas, the districts?
Yes.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
It doesn't, no. And it includes a couple of things that aren't?
I know that north corner of, or the very top corner.
Oh, you're talking about the top of north?
The very top.
Yeah, north corner.
I mean, it's, we're just kind of nitpicking at this point.
But, but that's, yeah, we, we need to make sure that it does encompass the, the historic area. But I, I, I'm a little, I, I just, I guess I would, just because we do like to stay in sync with the Chamber, I think we need to. And maybe we have talked to the Chamber. Darren raised a thing back there. May I add information?
Yes, please.
I think that what the walking tour, the sections, I intend to say, well, we do work with the Chamber on these types of things. And I mean, there's a really good information. But I also think that what we're trying to get to is additional format that will be on our app and also be on the signs. And that isn't going to be relegated to any section. That would be, we can add all of the historic elements into that website. I mean, this can be digital. So that's kind of the nice thing about that, where we're trying to go. Just make sure that everything is on the digital copy.
Both tours, both tours could be on that digital copy.
Yeah, everything can be on that digitally, because you don't have the, the, what happened there was for space and size. And to give something simple to people who come to town, they don't have to think I have to walk everywhere. I, and obviously to take them into our retail district is also why we chose what we chose, to go into our stores. So there wasn't supposed to ever be a conflict, it was just supposed to be a simpler version, just one version of what we're already doing for a larger. And we're getting back to that with additional copy that will have, that we're already, I'm already working on for our website with a QR code. So I just thought maybe that would help in that discussion. Yeah, I, I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure that we're not going, because I think that's one of the biggest fundraisers they have is that, is that walking tour. And people, even though it's called the walking tour, most people drive. Because I see them all driving down the road and reading the magazines, stopping in front of the houses. But, but I have no problem with this. But I, I, as you know, I'd like to get some feedback from, from the Chamber, what they thought about this. And if, if it's not going to affect them at all, then boy, they'd probably appreciate us putting all of our QR codes on everything in that book. At the same time, if you look at that book, it's mostly average, there's a lot of advertisements in it, which is a funding pain factor now.
Just, just one comment. I think what Darren means too in his plan is that even the oldest old walking tour signs, which are on stop signs now, would be replaced with, with lots of QR codes. So it would all be seamless to, the consumer doesn't care that it's Jango or City or whatever. But that, I think that's.
No, and I totally, it is, so, yeah, I guess what my fear is, is that if this was a, a, a revenue generator for the Chamber, and all of a sudden now we've kicked the, the legs out from under their fundraiser because you don't need the magazine anymore if it's all on QR code. I, I think that just discussion needs to be happening. I, I don't know one way or the other. I'm not involved in those discussions. But.
Definitely a good consideration.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good word, consideration. I love the design of them and everything else. And I know that the city, the city has, the streets, I don't know, I guess the parks. I saw them have their little postal digger on the front of the little Bobcat, putting some holes in the ground today. So up in the park, so they, they have the equipment to put these.
Yeah, they have the capability. It would just be if it was done all at one time, would they, would they be able to handle that with all of their day-to-day? Probably not. But if it was done over time, yeah.
And nothing has to get done overnight. Have you been yelling at somebody?
I mean, I just was so excited about the solar eclipse yesterday.
Oh, wait, you're supposed to keep your mouth closed.
Well, I did it. Apparently I did it.
Glasses over your mouth. So it didn't hit you topsoil.
Funding wise, is this, I would like to see it go off, you know, everywhere in the historic districts. And, and it is a lot of money. It would probably, because it's not that far away, that we probably ought to look at where, where this funding is going to come from and maybe put maybe a budget, but. Good, it's coming up real soon.
Great. Councilman Kerry?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Herb's objection about putting preempting the CIP on this. I do like the idea. I like the signs. I wondered if, you know, I know about printing costs in general. Generally, buy more, you get them cheaper.
Yeah.
So doing this piecemeal may be more expensive in the long run.
Yeah, there is a, I think on the quote that we got, because of the quantity, there was definitely a discount on there. Yeah.
So, you know, I can't really see us doing this bit at a time. It's going to have to be go or no go. Third thing is I noticed that, you know, if you're driving down Highway 90, you're not going to see most of those signs because they're off, I don't see several of those cross streets marked on Highway 90. So there'd be another six or eight or 10 signs that would be required to make those visible.
I see what you're saying.
I'd also love to see, you know, somebody mention, you know, having, having the locals donate for them or, or do some other fundraising effort. I know that the Landmark Commission can't really do that, but the P and Z can. I mean, not the P and Z, the Chamber can.
Yeah. Yeah, they can, definitely. If this is something, the, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, didn't.
Well, the last thing was, and this may be irrelevant now that we're talking about putting QR codes on the signs, and that is the arrows. And when I first saw the signs, I thought, well, we should start to return when you get one of these signs. But if you've got it on your phone, you've got a map before you take them.
Yeah, we should be able to.
One second, before, if I may. Priscilla?
There was actually a special at the HLC meeting, a comment about this, go out to homeowners to see if they can really provide what they can solve.
Yeah. I think we had mentioned that, yeah.
I don't know with the breakdown, the beef, or the acting sign.
Well, I think that that's a detail that we can get into. That was one of the things that was brought up, maybe the businesses, maybe the people.
A lot of people would, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Priscilla, you said you'd take care of them when you're.
Yeah, we could break it down.
You said you'd take care of them when your street, there's, there's seven of them.
Her corner.
I make a motion that Priscilla pays for.
That's her corner.
Some communities are selling the old ones.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I have the old one when I look anyone up.
Did you pay for it?
Councilwoman Martinez, I don't want to, I don't want to neglect you, please.
No, I'll speak up.
Yes.
Now, I, I like what Cindy said, that we could use the hotel funds, because it does fund a fall and reap that. We have, that, that's, that is a bucket. So that would keep us off of pulling money out of the CIP, which I agree with Herb and them. I don't like bumping things unless it's a legitimate rack and stack type of thing. But using the tat, hotel tax fund, pull that out of that stream altogether. And underneath the hotel tax fund bracket. It's, I'd rather do the, do it all at once, because it is expensive, to piecemeal it. I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion regarding your walking tour. I've lived all over the world, and instead of putting them on the back of stop signs and everything, they have a pole that you can see, we're driving down the street and everything, that it's up there, like where we put our Christmas lights, things on the poles along 90.
Yeah.
Up there to where it's visible, and we could have a smaller one on the street signs and stuff. So where they can do the QR code, but that way they could say, oh, look, turn here, walking tour.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you ain't going to know.
Yeah.
So, but I love this idea. It reminds me of back home in St. Augustine, Florida, because they do this here, too. It's great. I love the historic part of it. It just reminds me of home.
Great. So I think, if I can summarize, I think that everybody feels like it's beautiful. I think it's something that would be an aesthetic enhancement. We don't have... Wait, I wrote down a bunch of these. So I like all of the ideas. I like the ideas of leveraging the digital... Because so many people nowadays are just going off the QR code. I don't know how they do it. I have to have something sometimes in my hand. I can't read a book on a tablet. But we've had some other really great ideas with this. I love the fact that HLC is bringing this forth because honoring the historic district, I think, is phenomenal. But we run into a couple of, I think, higher level... I think they're higher level challenges. Right now, we're in the middle of, like, there's no emergency to do something like this. We are in the middle of a downtown master plan and a UDO and a comprehensive master plan. So I think that I would love to see this in that. I think that that would give us time to go through that and start looking at it in terms of the prioritization. I would just have, I would hate to circumvent that without... Like, with the parking, there was a reason for us to circumvent it because we just needed it now. There are some other areas in here that we could do smaller level implementation without a huge investment, but make sure that we're incorporating this into the master plan, into the comprehensive plan and into the downtown master plan. I would love to see it go, like, I would buy the one by my place and the one by my parents, and I would be happy to do that. I think there are a lot of other people, but I think that we should be very careful about making changes like that, incorporate it into the bigger thing, and then identify where the funding is going to go through. I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I think that we can get it accomplished within a year. But I don't know that there's a reason that we would want to do something like this immediately and circumvent all the planning efforts, circumvent the planning effort of the CIP. We've been pretty methodical about that. It's kind of popping up in front of us.
Yeah.
I would say that if we had a funding source that came in front of us and just said, hey, listen, we got 200 grand, we want to do it all across the board, and it's free to the city, no problem, doesn't cost the citizens anything, that's great. Or if we wanted to do a fundraising thing, but still, how we would implement something like that where we change the signs, I think we'd need to go through more of that planning process that's already in place.
Got it.
Did I capture that fairly well?
I think there's one other thing you might consider.
What's that?
Once you figure out what the actual cost for everything is, figure out a per sign cost and set up and adopt a sign program where people can sign up and say, I want to buy two of them or three of them. Or a block can get together and say, we want to buy 10 of them.
Yeah.
So let them adopt.
That's great.
Well, and I think that...
It's $1,700 a sign plus whatever the installation is for phase one, if you want them in physical. The yellow dots are 22 yellow dots.
So I think that, I think that this is something that deserves some more consideration. I think it's a great idea to begin with. We just need to put some more planning behind it. Are we okay with saying, I think that everybody on council, what I'm hearing is everybody on council thinks this is a great idea. We just need to figure out how to work it into our planning processes, work it into the rest of what we're doing, but I would really like to see this implemented.
It needs to be in the budget.
Needs to be in the budget.
We need to have a firm cost.
Okay.
There's no cost here.
Emergency items that pop up and need to go into the budget, I get that. Something like this, maybe not as much.
I think we just direct Scott to pull this into the budget.
So we begin the process, I think we began...
We're starting the budget process like next month.
Yeah.
We begin the process, let's talk to our city planners about how we would incorporate that and start working this in. I think that the design is pretty straightforward. We've already got the design. We already worked that out with Alsatian Oaks and...
Yeah, based on the conversation I've heard, just again, not summarizing what the mayor said, but what, based on your input, keep in mind one thing, like, on the CIP, the CIP isn't, doesn't have a separate funding source. Where the funding comes from doesn't really matter. CIP has grant funds and general fund money and utility fund money, and it pulls from a lot of different sources. So the source of the funds really don't affect whether it's in the CIP or not or how it's done. And I think if you wanted to incorporate it in the CIP, I think that makes a whole lot of sense. And what I would suggest is you already have a downtown master plan that is in the works that is a CIP project, if you can think about it that way. That project, when it is, it's going to go through a public process, and when it is completed, it will identify a list of, a whole list of projects, whether it's sidewalks or parking improvements, or, you know, we had a big public meeting about improvements to Houston Square. All of that would be encapsulated in that downtown plan. And there are grant funds that help to pay for different aspects of a plan like that. Generally, at least the ones I've been a part of have done surface level improvements like sidewalks and streets and that kind of thing for historic downtown specifically. So this could be something that may, may, I emphasize, may have some portion of grant funding that would be available, depending on where those signs are located. So the ones that are in the immediate historic district may actually have some type of funding source. So what I would suggest is that this would be something that you may want to include is, I think the mayor alluded to, as part of your public process with the downtown master plan specifically. And then the elements that are drafted out of that downtown master plan, I think, will inform your CIP. As you develop CIP, you will prioritize what those projects are, which ones we need to do first. And, you know, prioritization happens for a lot of different reasons. One might be simply funding availability, but also, you know, the cost, you know. Do a $100,000 project before you do a $1 million project because we can knock this out first type of thing. So I would suggest that maybe you follow that pattern, and certainly, as we see that, that's a 24-month time horizon. Within less than 20, I guess 18 months or so now, we should see that downtown master plan getting completed and presented to council for adoption, and that will have these projects. And that would allow this to go through an even more public process where people can weigh in on what the signs look like and where they go and the polls and all of that.
I don't think it's a bad idea for us to start doing some outreach also, talking to maybe, and it could be grassroots, let's go around and talk to folks and see if we can start gathering names of people that would be interested in that. Same thing with the businesses. I don't think there's any reason that we can't continue to move forward with the concept presented out there, get by and find out if people would privately... I think that a lot of people would privately fund this. See if we can find some additional grant funding that would support that. The thing I would be really hesitant to do is to do a quarter of the city or a half of the city, and then somebody else decides they've got another idea, and we change out the street signs for the other one. So I think that whatever we do needs to be a good solid plan for this and a phased-in plan. Okay.
Okay.
So I think that we continue this conversation. I don't think that this is the end of it. I think that we should start refining this. Let's go ahead and continue to talk about this, make sure that it gets in with Simple City and with their efforts. And I would encourage, I'll do the same thing, I'll do outreach to the people that I know. Let's see if we can start gathering support, garnering support, financial and otherwise, how we can start capturing those folks.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing something like this. This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on a budget for the twinning anniversary ceremony with Insasim. So we talked about this a little bit, the cultural significance of this. In French, they call, here we call it twinning, there they call it jumelage. And jumelage is a very specific thing. It is an exchange of heritage, culture, and commerce. And one of the things, we've done a lot with heritage and culture over the last 15 years. I think we've done a lot of that. We began the discussions with Insasim and honestly, with Colmar last year, with a couple of the other ones in Hunavir and Rivavilla. And I can never say Rivavilla correctly, and I don't think I did it right now.
I was close.
I was close. It's kind of like saying...
I think we ought to adopt a term jumelage.
That's a whole different... That's not on the... You're exploding my mind. And so the importance of this to a lot of the people, and this is something that, you know, we've talked about this before, I want to be very careful about, about, like, specifically honoring one group over the other, because we have a lot of Alsatians, we have a lot of Belgians, we have a lot of Germans, we have a lot of different cultures, but each one, the Alsatians are the ones that have really embraced this on a citywide level. And so I think this is something that is very important, not just to the citizens, but to the community because of the number of them that we have here. So this is something that we really should do something very big with them. They send people back here every single year. I was really excited because we had almost, we had, initially, we had almost four dozen people, and then I found out back in the '70s, they're bringing like 200 people, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, okay, I'm embarrassed. But it is, it's a great relationship to continue to honor, and I'd like to, I wanted to be very, like, there's a lot of these things we can do within normal process, but I wanted to bring it in front of council. And I asked Phil to go through and work with the, with the group that is coordinating with all of the different folks. He's got some details, and I think that he's got a proposed budget for the, it's an entire weekend that they're going to be here. Most of what they're doing is going to be, they're going to be put up with those families. So what they're asking of the city is actually not that much, all things considered. And I'll let you go through details. So Phil?
I can answer.
Okay.
I have your email.
Basically, they're coming in on Friday. They're coming in a bus down from Van Derr in San Antonio for the ITC. And so then that evening, we'll have a big gathering. They're coming here because of the Alsatian Festival, and there's a lot of volunteers that show up at Cady Park to start setting up for the Alsatian Festival at about 4:00 on Friday. And then a lot of them have indicated they'd like to help set that up. So we're going to have a first dinner for them, and that's what that thing on Friday night is. And we've ordered in pizzas from Luigi's, actually, I think 42 pizzas. And then we'll also have beer and wine. Of course, there'll be tea and other things there. And then lunch on, so Saturday morning, there's going to be a walking tour. Talking about walking tours, Priscilla has volunteered, got volunteered.
Volunteered.
Requested, and she's graciously accepted the challenge for a two-hour walking tour through, that she gives regularly. Of course, there will be translators there to help translate what she's saying in English so the French people can understand what's going on. And then after that, they'll be at lunchtime on Saturday in the yard here, and there'll be sliders and beer and wine provided. There's sliders from the Blue Lacy. And then, and then, of course, that Saturday night is the Alsatian Festival, but there's nothing related to them related to the Alsatian Festival, that's just everybody on their own. And then the twinning ceremony, which is at 5:00 in Houston Square, and there's nothing there other than we will have chairs there and a little stage set up. And then those same chairs will be moved over to, the Alsatians want to... So basically, all these Alsatians are being hosted by families in town. So they're putting people up in their houses and providing transportation and stuff like that, and food for them. Like, for instance, Friday lunchtime because they wouldn't have eaten, and then Saturday morning, Sunday morning. And then the twinning ceremony, again, in the afternoon, and then on Sunday, and then these Alsatian families, they want to pay... Family, so they're paying for a catered dinner at the Bane Ranch, and all we're providing there is, so you see dinner at Bane Ranch, and there's just a table and chairs there and then some appetizers. And then the Alsatian families are probably going to pay for the catered food. And then we also are talking about giving them gifts individually. There's, again, there are about 50 of them coming, so each one would be given a glass, an Alsatian glass, a wine glass that has a Castroville on it, the Canolines. They'd have an Alsatian festival beer mug, but the beer mugs this year do say Inchen Sign and Castroville Tweenie. And then also, there's a little leather keychain that is made, being made up by, I guess you guys need to talk about that.
Overhump?
Overall. And again, has the commemorating the tween, this retweeting. And then, so all told, you can see there, it comes up to about $9,000. Anything we don't spend, because I, you know, it's really hard to estimate all this stuff, but anything we don't spend, we would, you know, again, it would be no cost. So I guess I would like to make a motion that we support this effort up to $10,000.
Staff has a couple of things we need to clarify.
You what?
We have a couple of things to clarify.
Okay.
So a number of keychains, how many are we ordering?
They would just be for them, so it'd be just 50.
I think that...
Oh, wait, sorry.
Well, so I think that it's actually more than just the 50 because we would want to do this for the host families as well. The keychain, it is...
How many host families are there?
Well, it's basically two people per host family. So there's 50 guests and 50 hosts.
25.
So there's 25 couples.
Right. Okay.
But I think that...
So that's 100.
I think you would also want to, you would probably want to make up more to, because I think there's a lot more than just the host families that are going to be coming to the twinning ceremony. So maybe the same way that we wholesale out to the local businesses for our stuff, I think that you should have it available at that time for the people to get them. And maybe if...
So you'd sell them at the day of?
I think you would have them available to purchase, probably from, like, old local or one of the local businesses here that do that kind of thing.
Okay, so that was one point of clarity that I just wanted to...
When you started your event, you could have a mug for 10 bucks extra.
And then do we want to talk about the filming costs? Because that's not on the list.
The other question, yeah, the videography video, how do you want, do you want to memorialize this video? I think we should. What level do we want to go? I mean, do we want to have just people who are there to video it, or do we want to hire someone? I've got a person named AB who does a lot of video work for us, and he and I told him to do a podium prize with two different people because it's going to be short, it's going to be really hard for one guy with a video camera to catch the entire event. So I would think if you have two people videoing it, then make sure they get all the material from that day.
He also does drone work, which is all with a lot of fun when you're looking at it at that length.
So you're talking about just the tween ceremony, which will be thirty minutes on Sunday, and what?
I've already had, when I originally knew this was gonna happen, I thought they were gonna be doing it at the Alsatian Festival, so I haven't hired him to come out and do that day. But he can also come, but it's gonna cost more, and I have to come out on the drive all the way back, I have to run on Sunday.
So, that's just another area that y'all may wanna consider, and, and again, there's multiple ways to skin that cat. I think at one point, one meeting we had with Phil and the mayor, and myself and Darren Hamm, there's another gentleman that maybe will do some filmography that day, I believe, that was thrown out, I don't remember the name of the person, but, but if we're establishing a budget and you wanna go this route, I just wanna be clear that we may wanna build in more of a contingency than what Phil put in, because that filmography, to have two people do it all day, that's about twenty-five hundred bucks. Not all day, but to come out Sunday and just, just film for that period of time.
Well, wait, you're talking about Saturday during the Alsatian Festival?
No, I'm talking about Sunday, during the tween Festival, if we had two people come out and film that-
Just for the tween?
The quote that Darren got was twenty-five hundred dollars to do that. Now, that doesn't mean we have to utilize that and use them and do that, but I just wanted to, I'm trying to provide some frame of reference.
Oh, again, I guess I heard two different things, but you're, you're talking about Sun, I thought you were talking about Saturday.
Saturday's already booked, that's separate, we're doing that-
For tourism purposes, we wanna catch the Alsatian Festival.
Yeah, so we're, we're building, building a video library for, for our marketing and tourism purposes, so that's already taken care of, that's not part of this budget.
Is there a way that they could do something, because the tween ceremony is short. I mean, the, the Alsatian Festival, that's gonna be several hours of them, that would take quite a bit for them. The tween ceremony, did you talk to them about, you know, it's, it's twenty minutes, and out of that, there's probably ten minutes worth of video.
Yes, but unfortunately, it's an hour drive out, or whatever, an hour to get here, an hour to go back.
You can stay at my place.
And, that, and then you have to, usually when you hire someone on the weekend, they pay you, you pay them.
And I don't wanna high center, that's, I wasn't, this wasn't for us to try to decide what to do about that, I just wanted to give you context for what, if you're trying to adopt a budget, there's something else to consider.
I, I think, but I don't know if we need him to come out for this twenty, for the twenty-minute one, we could probably get Lee or somebody else to do that, we'd more willing to volunteer that.
And- That's a good idea.
But, but, and then there's, again, a little fluff in here, so I'm just saying ten thousand above, even, you know, if we bought the medals, that increases it by three hundred dollars, so we're, you know, so, so I, I don't wanna ask too much, but, but I think, and I'm a little nervous that I'm top-covered everything here, but that's why I had fifteen percent.
Well, the other, the other thing for context, just for the council, Deborah was mentioning the other day, that when y'all did the, when they did this, when?
I guess the last time I was here was what, '08?
Two thousand and nine.
So in two thousand and nine, council spent about ten thousand dollars back then. Was that right?
I think so.
Councilman Dyer, had a question.
Is there a person that, that you have designated that is the chairman of this whole event? That's my first question. My second question is, is there a budget? And my third question is, what of this is open to the public, and what is by invitation only? I mean, you can't have three hundred people show up, you're only expecting a hundred, so we need to know, we need to have a clearer understanding of what's public, what's private, or semi-private, and what's the cost, and see it all at once, and vote for it, and give you the money. I mean, it's not something that we're opposed, I'm not opposed to any of it, I wanna do it, but I wanna see the whole enchilada.
And so, there is, there's a planning committee for this, that is doing the coordination between the folks with, with the mayor, and with the Alstons Medina County, Texas nonprofit group, and then, and we're kind of working on that together for the actual ceremony itself. What we were talking about with the budget is that we would, we would, the city would sponsor the host families, because they're taking people in, and they're spending money and time on doing that, and we would spend on the Alsatian visitors, but we would have it so that it would be like a ticket-based. I think we've gotten to that on the, on the-
The yard.
On the yard.
Yeah, well, I guess her, they're, everything except at the Bame Ranch, because that's being paid for by them.
Because they're paid for.
But everything else is open to the public, it's just that the food will only be provided to one meal to each of the Alsatian visitors, and one meal to each of two host families.
I just, yeah, well, that just needs to be clear to everybody, so that everybody doesn't show up expecting to get a pizza, and then they say, well, that's only for these people.
Right.
We don't wanna have that happen.
Because, and that's why the cost is so little, it could be back when that they opened it up to everybody, and really-
Well, one of the things on the previous-
Or put a fee on it, let anybody come who wants to pay, and pay, and that is involved in this.
Right. And so, the, the ones that would be open, and we want to be not only open like, okay, you can come, but please come, please enjoy this. That would be at the yard specifically, that would be at the Alsatian Festival.
Is that this area right here?
That'll be, like, over, like, their-
That corner where the bar?
The corner.
If you put it at the yard, people don't stop.
Yep, and we want that, that's something that we really want, as a part of the, the celebration, the honoring of this. And they can, they, we, we're putting out, I don't know if we decided on tickets or wristbands, so the ones that are paid for will be paid for with those prepaid. And then the other ones, the people that wanted to come and visit and be a part of it, we hope to have many, many people out for that, then they would just purchase their-
In cash.
Right, and they could, that's why I was saying also for the keychains, I really think that we need to be prepared with more keychains. The ones that we give are specifically to the ones that are investing their time and effort and money, the Alsatians are investing a ton into this, so having it available to them, but also, having it available through the local places. Okay? Does that, does that cover that? Okay. Let's keep the conversation under one conversation. Councilman.
Am I correct that this is next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
No.
Okay, well.
Yeah, the dates are wrong.
I did that just to see who picked that up.
What is it, August?
Twenty-sixth.
It's the end of, it's a, it's the last week in April that that-
It's the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
This month.
This month. Three weeks.
So we have to make the decision today, because the city council is only a couple of days before that meeting.
And this is within what Scott's budget is to spend on something like this, but I really wanted this to be in front of the council, partially because, I mean, this is, this is money that we're all responsible for, and partially because I wanna make sure that people, the people of Inchen Simon, of Alstons, know how important this relationship is. And you had?
That was it, that was, I was just-
Yes.
The city administrator has a thirty thousand dollar limit. Seems to me, this is so much in fluid right now, we just ought to authorize him to get it, figure it out and pay for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to have, I wanted to make sure that we had that conversation, I didn't want it to, I mean, it's easy to do that behind closed doors, but I thought it was just best to, to bring it out, have people talking about it. Okay?
I already talked.
I support it, I think it would be a great benefit to our, our guests, as well as our residents and others, in terms of tourism and attraction to the city of Castroville, so I fully support it.
Great, all right, thank you. Councilman.
I support it, at the next city council meeting, I'd like to see the scheduled events.
Yep.
And if prices are tied with it, if anybody else wants to attend, that way they don't, I'm just gonna box them. And who's gonna be given the already banned, so city council are gonna be giving a ban to cannabis, like the visitors and the host families, all of that. I'd love to see the scheduled events, that way we can go out and advertise it that week, since it's gonna be that week at the next city council meeting.
Yeah, the biggest, best place to visit with all these individuals coming is the Alsatian Festival. It's gonna start at four o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday, and it's gonna go for eleven o'clock at night. And they came here specifically for the festival, so they're gonna be there and ready. There'll be other opportunities, and we will have that published, or we'll bring it at the next council meeting, and-
Put it out on all the signboards and stuff.
Yeah, we, at the same time, as big as the yard is across the street, a hundred people will fill it up. So if we, if, if everybody comes out thinking they get there, and you can't fit three hundred people in there. And so that's why-
Luckily, we can fit a lot of people around.
We can fit a lot of people, we can post down the streets and have a big street party. But the, but again, on the walking tour, we're kinda, again, these fifty people plus others will be on this walking tour, and it's just so many people that can be in that. So, so these things, we do expect some, the host families and other people that know these people from even over there that aren't host families. But the really big place to meet everybody, I can tell you right now, is the Alsatian Festival. It's free to go to the Alsatian Festival, and it's at Kenny Park, and it's open to everybody in town. And, of course, the food and the drinks and everything else costs money, the kids, the gangs and everything, but it's free to go to the thing. And it's not a fundraiser to make money, it's, it, it, the whole group that's running that is, we try to end the, end the year after the festival with really a zero increase. It's just a party for Castroville, and, and it's not a fundraiser. So, that's open to everybody, and if anybody wants to come visit them, that's where you go.
So what I'm hearing is, generally, we'd like to get more information at the next council meeting, we're okay with around where the budget is, we just need to refine it and understand exactly what it is, and figure out which portions we need to start talking about with other people. I think we can get that, that last part together pretty quickly, so that we can make sure that people understand, you know, when they're gonna be here, and we're inviting guests. There's sometimes we want to have them just, like with host families, in a little bit more quiet setting, but we have plenty of opportunities for people to get out there. And I know that word, just family word, we'll get around.
And, and we'll go through that in the planning, because Darren and I have been on the planning things, Jennifer Holt House has kind of probably taken the lead on that, but there's other people around, and again, it's tied into the, the group that's running the Alsatian Festival, so they're all, plus a group that Darren said over there. I would, I guess from the, what everybody said here, I guess basically, we're all in agreement, only maybe for you to vote on it, but in agreement that this is something that Scott can handle, and his discretionary funds, and, or it's unauthorized, and we don't need to really-
Yeah, be careful, I don't have any discretionary funds, but I have budget authority.
You're within your budget.
Within the budget, we will need to amend the budget to recognize this, but that's not a-
Well, I shouldn't say within the budget, it's within your spending capacity.
But like for the schedule, like for city council members of what time?
I, I'll bring that to the next meeting.
That way we know-
At the next meeting? Being adjusted a little bit.
Okay. Well, we should be able to get that out within the next week or so, we'll get it out well in advance of the next council meeting.
And then if you can get any flyers you got out, because that way, at the different places for the festival and everything.
He's been, he's been working up a sweat, hanging out, putting flowers, flyers everywhere.
I haven't seen one at the store yet.
Obviously, you may comment about if you wait till the next council meeting, that's only four days before you get to get anything done, you probably got to back up something.
Well, I think that with, I, I think that the direction that we're going with this is the council's in favor of this, and staff can move forward based on the direction that we've given, we'll come back and give an update to council right before the thing, but I think that overall, we've got support for that. Correct?
Correct, and I will email Scott, who will email out the council, and in fact, there's two flyers, one Darren worked up for the Alsatian Festival, and the other one is, who's back in the corner, and-
The talented one did that.
The talented one, and then-
I was printing one out, I didn't work it up, I didn't print it out.
Oh, I thought you, no, the two, the two dancers, you did that one, didn't you? The two, the man and woman?
Oh, the graphics, I need, I need some graphics.
Yes. Okay, so, we did, so we'll send those two out to Scott, who can distribute them to the city council, and I'll do that here tonight.
We do have a fourteen-minute-old motion by Councilman King.
Well, actually, nobody seconded it, so we die.
Yeah, I think they can just, I think that, that we're in agreement, and Scott, if you need further clarification, then we'll work through there. All right, great. Next item is discussion on future agenda items. Is there anything that we have missed on the pending agenda list?
No, Karen brought up a, a good point, because next time, at the next meeting, we should be getting our department briefings, correct, Scott?
That's correct.
Maybe the gang for Public Works Utilities could give a briefing on the, what Karen briefed on about, you know, fixed incomes and everything, and what-
Yeah, Barney, I, I, I made a note, and we're gonna, we're actually working on the next newsletter this week. So, we're gonna try to be a month ahead with that, so we'll, I made a note to add that to newsletter, appreciate the commentary, and make it prominent, so it's, it's very visible, so we'll do that.
Yeah, that way they can have that in the briefings to brief us on what our policy is and everything.
Yeah, but that's on an agenda item, that, that'll just get taken care of.
And I think what she's asking for is, let's make sure that we put that together, and then put that as an update on the-
Of what they're working on type thing.
What they're working on.
On the staff reports.
On the staff reports, what they're working on, 'cause they always say what they're working on, or what's completed and everything. Whoever works on this-
The newsletter.
The newsletter, or whatever, that it was published in the newsletter, to let people know about it type thing, getting the word out. Let us know that that's been handled. Another thing, under staff reports, is maybe get chief to give us what the rules are regarding carts and ATVs, 'cause I see kids flying down my road and in my neighborhood on them all the time, with no adult. So if we could get that going, that'd be greatly appreciated.
If we could start by maybe giving them warnings, I think one warning would scare them away.
But we need to know what the policy is, and that chief can have that as part of his report.
And with the legality just across the board with Texas state law. Okay? Great. Anything else that we have missed on the pending agenda item list?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it's a question for Cynthia, I'm not sure. I'm concerned about the upcoming vote on gas. My question is, is the council member allowed, and will we be given an opportunity in a city council meeting, or some other forum, to express our individual opinion about whether we should or should not sell the gas? We have not had any discussion in meetings, there, nobody knows what their representative wants to support. I get a lot of questions, what do you think about it? I don't even know if I can answer them. So I, I would like to know, can each member be presented an opportunity, maybe it'll be at the meeting that you have, or maybe at a council meeting, but we're running out of time, to make a public statement, short one, about whether they favor it, or don't favor it, and what their concerns are.
Okay, but since that is not a pending agenda item list, let's make-
It's a question.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I guess he's asking, can he put that as a pending agenda item?
So my response to that, Councilman Dyer, is I have, I was kind of not necessarily prepared to give the answer out here in the public, but I have done some research on that, and I can get it sent out to y'all as legal opinions to the council members. That way you know where your parameter is.
Okay. Why don't we have it on the, the next agenda item, on the next city council meeting, like a review of questions and answers, and make sure that we've got those out there? Because a lot of people, they really don't understand, this has come upon us, the need to deal with this so immediately. People are like, why are you doing this so quickly, and there are very specific reasons behind that, so let's have that-
It will be, so you have your, you have your public meeting for the gas election, and then following that will be the council meeting. So there will be an item related to the gas election on the following meeting.
Okay.
For certain. More than likely, the same presentation that'll be done in the public meeting, they'll probably do again-
What's the date for the public meeting?
It's the Fri, the Friday prior to the council meetings, whatever date that falls in.
The nineteenth?
It's on the eighteenth.
I'm sorry, the Thursday prior, that's right. That's right, y'all chose Thursdays.
Yeah.
It was a Thursday prior.
That's the ninth of May?
No, the eighteenth of April.
Eighteenth of April.
In two, two weeks.
Because, because when you discuss it, the early voting starts following.
Yes, on the twenty-second.
Okay.
And we're putting that out, what, five-thirty or six?
We did a term of, uh, a time.
Yeah, I think it's six.
I think it's six, I have six on my calendar.
Should we do six-thirty?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Probably the newspaper will state six.
I think we've already kind of started saying six o'clock, in fact, it should have been in the newsletter, the newsletter said six o'clock.
Perfect. Okay, so let's just, as a follow-up to that, let's just make sure that we get something out to the council that says, you can't say this, you can't say that.
Yeah, so legal opinion will be headed your way very soon.
Great, anything else on pending agenda?
Uh, yeah, so, Councilmember Martinez mentioned the briefing on the, the fixed incomes and stuff, just could we get added to that? Like, what, what are the things we're doing right now related to that, and then?
I think you're also talking about property tax exemptions as well?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
You're aware of that?
But then, also-
I can't talk to you about it right now, but-
If, if it's not too big of a hassle to, like, review what, like, where council has talked about that in the last five years or something like that?
Well, you're talking about the utility policy then, is what you're talking about, per se. Correct?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about this.
Well, what I, what I can look at is-
I'm guessing it's been talked about recently, but before I started coming, and just getting a little bit of the background of that would be helpful.
I, I think that that is, I think that we can state it by saying that we talk about it dozens of times annually, and we put it out in newsletters, so it's, it's been out there, and people may not have found it, but I think that there are times that you identify, and, and I know what you're trying to do, is just make sure that people know that we are talking about it, that we are getting that out to the best of our ability.
Yeah, I, I think perhaps I'm not making myself clear, not how often do we talk about the, the senior discount on the utility bill, but what other options has council discussed for helping senior citizens, and decided against in the past?
I think that is probably-
That's a personal research project, I think, that's something you could probably take on and try and find, and I'll help you do that. Anyway, we can get afterward. But I think when we talk about doing an over sixty-five-
I'll talk to you afterward.
Looking at the newsletter, you know, one of the things I think is a good idea that I hear, that you're mentioning is, you know, going beyond just what the utility system offers, but what are the over sixty-five programs the city offers, 'cause we have multiple. So, that's a great idea, so we'll, we'll look at that, highlighting that in the newsletter, and making that its own big thing, like, here's the senior discounts that are available to Castroville.
Yep, and we are, one of the things that we talked about earlier was on the, I think this is not gonna be clear on the newsletter, but I put out that I wanna start doing the mayor's corner to, to allow people to ask questions like this, say, these are the things that we're asking about, that we're not hearing back about, or these are the things that I found out about, that we'd like to hear more about, so it's creating that, overall, I think we're trying to create something that is very open, and asking people, what do you not know that you want to know, or-
You're gonna put, because we're in a future agenda, and you're gonna talk about this in the future agenda.
We will talk about, yeah, that, what David was talking about in a future agenda. Okay. Anything else for you?
No. What was, what was the-
All right, we'll talk to you about that afterward, I'm sorry, I'm still in the meeting.
No, I'm asking, what was the agenda, are, for clarity? Future agenda items.
It's a future agenda item, we're talking about future agenda items. We'll talk to you afterward, if you, we need to finish out the meeting. She will fuss at me, and this, this is-
Because we have to be under the laws.
Actually, no, yeah. I'll talk to you about it afterward, I promise.
Can I think to this time?
All right.
I already did my part.
Great, all right. Then we are through the agenda, and adjourned at seven-twenty-nine, record time.
Deborah owes me a dollar.